I'm going to be late.
Okay.
And Mr. Box is not going to be here, so...
We know that. You're notified about that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good chance that I won't be here next meeting.
Next meeting.
Dog ears.
Okay, you're on.
I'm wondering if just because...
No, you're on. He gave the thumbs up.
Oh, this would be okay. I said three of two different guys.
All right, we will call to order the meeting September 19th of the City Planning Commission for City of Salina. And the first item is the consent agenda with approval of summary minutes for the September 5th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend the minutes?
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. I appreciate the fact that as first time in the chair, as chair, there are no public hearing items and no administrative items, thank you, to the powers that be. But preliminary discussion items, 5.1 and 5.2. 5.1, first, we will consider authorizing a text amendment application to be filed at indoor shooting ranges as conditional use in C3 through C7 commercial zoning districts and in I2 and I3 industrial zoning districts.
What we have initiated here is having preliminary discussion items when we're discussing anything in the nature of a text amendment. So we had done that earlier. We've gotten some guidance from you and we determined, based on your guidance, that you thought that, first of all, this Salina zoning ordinance should be amended to identify indoor shooting ranges as an allowed use within the city limits and that you felt that they should be allowed on a conditional use basis in C3, C4, C5, C6, and C7 districts and as a permitted use allowed by right in the I2 and I3 districts. So, John, do we have an active projector?
Yes.
Okay. So, what we would like for you to review and give us feedback on, and I realize that this is a semantical thing, but it also affects the numbering of the sections in terms of the alphabetizing. But as we looked at this, we started drafting from the standpoint of identifying the uses indoor shooting ranges, then I realized that we could very well have a situation where you have shooting ranges indoor and shooting ranges outdoor. And so, we did the alternate drafting and numbering, but our proposal is to take the conditional use list in C3 and add shooting ranges to that list in C4 and C5, if you want to keep scrolling, John, and C6, C7. And then, we would, they would be permitted as of right if you had I2 or I3 zoning. And so, the question before you today is simply, have we captured the direction that you gave us in terms of feedback? And if so, a motion should be made to direct us to initiate the text amendment process and we would advertise this text amendment for a public hearing on the 17th of October. But we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and advertise it for public hearing without giving you a chance to see the draft.
I have one question. On section 42-339, conditional uses, there's not a, there's not a district identified there?
There was, but when I asked Dustin to move it from page 2 to page 1, it disappeared.
But that would be C7.
That would be C7, yes.
Okay, that was my assumption.
It should read, "Conditional uses in the C7 district are as follows."
Mm-hmm.
But when we tried to fit all the commercial on the one page, that line disappeared. But the, the actual text would read, "Conditional uses in the C7 district are as follows." And the one thing that that does as to the property out at Westport, one of the concerns that staff had was that the property is bisected and that part of it is zone C7 and part of it is C5. But based on your direction to include that as a conditional use in both districts, then it wouldn't matter what the underlying zoning is. So if it's allowed in both districts, then it wouldn't distinguish. However, if you had felt that it, it shouldn't be permitted in C7 at all, then that would have had a potential impact. But what it would mean is if this text amendment moves forward, that any applicant who had property in a C3, C4, C5, C6, or C7 district could apply to establish a indoor shooting range as a conditional use in the commercial districts. And if they had a property in the industrial district in a suitable building, then they could move forward in the industrial district without, with just a building permit review. So, if, as I said, if we have correctly reflected the direction you've given us, then the appropriate action would be a motion to direct staff to initiate the text amendment process and we would advertise this for your October 17 meeting.
If it, I'm sorry. Is there a discussion here? Our new chairman, I would move that we authorize a text amendment application to be filed to add indoor shooting ranges as a conditional use in C3 through C7 commercial zoning districts as well as I2 and I3 industrial zoning districts.
Second.
And Mr. Freiberg, just so I'm hearing that right, was that for a permitted use in the I2 and I3?
That was to authorize a text amendment for indoor shooting ranges as conditional use in C3 through C7, so C3, C4, C5, C6, C7, as well as I2 and I3 industrial zoning.
Okay. So it's for conditional uses also in the industrial?
Does it need to be conditional in the I2 and I3?
No, it does not.
No, no, it's conditional in C3 through C7.
You directed us that you wanted it permitted.
As well as allowing them in I2 and I3.
Those words got omitted from the title.
Okay, as a permitted use, that's why we want to be sure about the wording. Okay, so it is as we have proposed by the staff?
Precisely.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that amendment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it deserves discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries.
You, are you okay with our modification where we use shooting ranges and qualify whether it's indoor or outdoor? We thought, in case any modification should occur in the future, where we had districts that allowed shooting ranges outdoors, that calling it a shooting range and clarifying that it's indoor would allow later adjustments that might allow shooting ranges that were outdoor or we didn't... Dustin wants to know if you have a preference for the indoor shooting range or shooting ranges indoor.
Oh.
So if you look on the proposed text amendment page, we have an "or" on each of those because it's going to affect where, well, it affects the language of how we actually state this type of use and where it gets inserted into the ordinances. And so that's why it's important for us that we know when we draft it, that we, we draft it correctly in, in terms of what you're thinking.
So, Dustin, which of those, one is indoor shooting ranges, the other is shooting ranges, parenthesis, indoor.
Correct.
Which of those seems more likely to exclude outdoor shooting ranges?
Well, I think the, Dean can correct me, but I think the latter was what we thought would make it a little, little more clear. That way, if you had a text amendment down the road, or if there's an opinion on outdoor shooting ranges later, shooting ranges indoor and shooting ranges outdoor would be right next to each other so that you could see them versus indoor up in the "I" and outdoor being down with the "O," if that makes sense. Because it's alphabetical, the uses are alphabetical.
Shooting ranges indoor or outdoor?
Yeah. It's, it's...
With some alphabetically in order.
And that's what Dean is saying. It's a little bit of semantical, but in our minds, the second probably, if there's something that happens in the future, we're not saying there would be, but if there were to be something that happens in the future, shooting ranges indoor and shooting ranges outdoor would be right next to each other.
Right.
And so, somebody could interpret the code correctly a little easier, probably.
And not hearing anything else from the commission, I would assume that that's okay. The second wording would be preferable.
When we show you, on our next item, we show you our zoning matrix that we're attempting to finalize, you will see the logic of that, that someone who would be using that matrix is likely, when they want to figure out if shooting ranges are allowed, to look at under shooting ranges and not, they're not going to look under "I" for indoor, they're going to look under "S" for shooting range. So, it's, I drafted this first with just using indoor shooting ranges and, and got all the numbering, and then I said, eh, I think it would work better if I, so then I had, it required going in and changing the numbering. But we think that, long-term, for people are instinctively going to look for the term "shooting ranges" under "S" as opposed to the "I."
So, commission, is there any disagreement about using the second wording for this? Okay, I see none, and that sounds fine. That'll be part of our assumption. Okay, we'll then move to discussion item 5.2, preliminary discussion of a downsizing application initiated by the city commission on West Crawford Street and whether many storage facilities should be a permitted or conditional use in the C6 or heavy commercial district. Staff report?
I think you have a map in your packets, and that map was given to the Salina City Commission at their September 11th meeting. But we became aware of some conceptual plans for converting the Hollidan-Hollidome site, now the Ambassador Inn site, to a mini storage facility. And when we noted that, our first check was to see whether the mini storage use was a permitted use or a conditional use. And we found that it was permitted under the current C6 zoning, but would be a conditional use if the property was zone C5. And then we further researched the original zoning of this property, which was the former Rocket Drive-In Theater site. And the property was rezoned to C6 in 1980, but we found that planning staff at the time had recommended that it be zone C5, kind of consistent with our discussion that we had in the previous study session. Part of staff's reasoning for recommending C5 was if you look at the predominant zoning pattern along West Crawford, it's predominantly C5. So, the city commission directed staff to do two things. One, initiate a map amendment that would downzone this property from C6 to C5, which would require a public hearing and approval of a conditional use permit if there was ever a proposal to develop the site as a mini storage facility. This application has been referred to you to conduct a public hearing on that. And so, that hearing, that application has been initiated by the city commission and referred to you for public hearing. But I would ask you, John, if you would please put up the zoning matrix. And you'll have to scroll across, if we can. So, what you have, and I guess if you go back to the left column again, John, one of the reasons, and I said, this is our matrix of uses in, in the city zoning, and, and you can see they're alphabetized here, and so, that's one of the reasons that we thought shooting range should be the term and then classified as indoor, because a person using this matrix would probably look for shooting ranges, and then we would classify how they were allowed, whether indoor or outdoor. So, if we scroll across now, John, and you look, above is the zoning district and the below is allowed versus conditional, I believe that's what you're, are you using A for allowed to distinguish it from permitted, or are they synonymous?
A as well.
And how is that different than a permitted?
P is permitted.
Okay. So, in our C3 district, if you want to do a mini storage facility, you must have a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission. If you want to do it in C6, you have to get a conditional, or C5, you have to get a conditional use permit. And if you want to do it in I1, you have to get a conditional use permit. But C6 allows many storage uses by right. It also allows things like lumber yards, auto body shops, things of those nature are allowed in C6 that aren't allowed in C5. So, one of the questions that we had in, as a follow-up to that, there's been some concern expressed about prominent gateway locations into the community being used for many storage or many warehouse facilities. So one of the things we wanted to run by you was, along with that zoning change that's been initiated, is there any interest on the city commission in changing, or city planning commission, changing the status of that to require conditional use permits across the board? And that, that would address other locations that might happen to be zone C6 but are in gateway corridors. So, we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that if you're in C3 or C5, you have to apply for a conditional use permit. In C6, you do not. Don't, don't know the rationale exactly for that, other than that C6 is supposed to be a more intense district than C5, and it allows about a little, somewhere between five and 10 uses in C6 that aren't permitted in C5. The other thing that the city commission asked staff to initiate would be an overlay district for the West Crawford corridor. And so, we are not ready by any stretch to set that for a hearing date or whatever. We have a lot of work and drafting to do, but there, the scope of the overlay that they were looking at would be from I-135 to Broadway. And that would, again, correspond a little bit to some of the discussion we had in our study session, because an overlay district might, might delete potentially incompatible uses. It also, an overlay district usually entails some sort of development standards, appearance-wise, architecturally, that may be over and above the base commercial district. So that has been initiated, but we're not ready by any means to set that for a hearing, although we will be having discussions with you on that. The real question before you is, is whether you wish to consider initiating a text amendment to modify the ordinance to make many storage facilities a conditional use in C6 locations as they are in C5 locations.
So is there discussion among the commissioners on that?
I have a question for staff. After initiation, then there would be a public hearing?
Correct.
So there are really two issues. The first issue is consistency, because it's inconsistent, which to me would denote that it should be changed to a conditional use permit. The second issue would just be aesthetics in terms of gateway approach into Salina, right?
Right. The, the concern was, and I, we don't know the exact reasons, but the, the conditional use process is a process to filter good locations and unsuitable locations, and it, it gives a discretion to say, that's really, doesn't fit there. And so, that discretion is not there if you happen to have C6 zoning on a gateway, and it is there if you have C5 zoning.
Right. Well, my personal feeling, of course, is that I'm very passionate about the Broadway corridor and that neighborhood center and that approach from Crawford to the interstate. So, it is a place I feel like we really need to be protective and we really need to look at development along that stretch and redevelopment. I think the elimination of this hotel would be following that concept and plan, but I don't think that replacing it with a mini storage unit, for example, would be consistent with the concept. So, my personal feeling is, it just needs to be changed for consistency purposes, but also in the greater plan of creating a gateway that's attractive to the city of Salina.
Would C5 be the best, or would a planned, PCD be, be better?
Well, that, that would be something that you could discuss at your public hearing on, on the 17th. You will be asked to make a recommendation at that time. We will be, obviously, sending notice to the owner of the property as well as the budding owners of the change. The owner has a right to know that it's been initiated and has a right to give their feedback to you.
Do you, I'm sorry.
What, I get, what would you accomplish through a planned C5? You, you're, you're, that, that would require that anybody who had a alternate plan for that property have their site plan approved by the planning commission?
All right, and that, that was my intention, but is, is it correct in saying that he wants to turn the motel rooms into storage units?
The concept was to have indoor storage, convert the motel building into indoor climatized storage, and also to construct some outdoor storage units around the building.
So, a planned commercial district would not change that, because he's not changing the building or the facade? It may, might be changing the use, but not the...
Right. We, I mean, we, that is certainly something that's in your toolbox, it's not what the, the city commission simply initiated a downzoning. And part of the reason for that would be that if it's zone C5, a conditional use permit would be required. The other thing to remember is that the other item here is a overlay district, and if an overlay district is created for West Crawford, then we're right back to having what we discussed, which is having the city planning commission review the site plans within the overlay district. And we would work with you to develop development standards for that corridor. So, all the things that we discussed about building placement appearance, again, the reason that you reviewed the plans for Foley Equipment Facility was because that's an overlay district for North Ohio. And so, if we have an overlay district doing a planned commercial district might be somewhat redundant since the overlay district would probably control. But it, the thing about an overlay district is that means, if there's a change to Western Sizzling, or if there's a change to something else out there, it's all going to be subject to that overlay district standard.
So, could they be done, or should they be done, at the same time?
What I'm, what I will say is, on October 17th, you will be conducting a public hearing on whether this property should be reclassified from C6 to C5. If there is a majority of the planning commission that believes it should be planned C5 and not C5, you can make that recommendation at that time. But it's not, the application has been initiated and it is for C5 zoning.
So this question is redundant, Mr. Andrew, but that will proceed regardless of our action today?
That is going to be moved forward and scheduled. The, the thing that we, as we identified the issue, the gateways, the questions about many storage and gateways, this application deals with one property on one gateway.
Right.
And it doesn't address the broader question of permitted versus conditional in C6. So, city commission didn't address that. We're giving you an opportunity to address that, if you wish. And if you wish, then you could direct staff to initiate a text amendment that would move this from an A to a C for conditional.
Yeah, but the October 17th hearing on rezoning, downzoning would occur regardless?
Yes. But if you initiate this today, this text amendment will be considered simultaneously with that.
Right.
And that's why we're bringing it to you today.
Other questions or discussion?
Do we send notice to those that are across the street in term, you said a budding, but what about property owners across the street? Does you consider that a budding, even though there's a highway?
No, in this case, it's a rezoning, so we will send notice to everyone who owns property within 200 feet of the edge of the hotel site. So, I don't, if you can go back to the map, John, I don't know if you have that available. But this is the site, so we will send notice to everyone within 200 feet of that site as well as to the owner of the site.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Are we ready to direct staff to initiate a text amendment?
I think we are.
Is that, that doesn't sound like a motion, though.
It is.
It is a motion?
You can make it formal. I move that we direct staff.
Okay. I move that we direct staff to initiate a text amendment that would move many warehouses from the permitted use list to the conditional use list in C6 district.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries unanimously.
And I, I didn't, I forwarded it to Crystal to get out to you, but hopefully you received a preliminary overview of the program for the planning conference. We still, I don't, I don't know if Dustin has, I don't, I haven't received any actual registration material, but that will be the next step to get registration material out to you. But it's here in Salina at the Hilton Garden Inn on the 19th and 20th of October. And October is National Community Planning Month, and we may, if we have gotten any, in the past, we have sometimes had the planning commission chair do a resolution declaring October to be Community Planning Month in Salina. And one of our activities, well, we have the, there's a fall fix-up, spruce-up activity that's, that's taking place, starting at the Friends of the River. They always do a spring and a fall, and they, they've got a variety of things that they're, I think they're doing some work in North Salina, they're doing some work along the river, they're doing some cleanup in downtown, I believe. So, that would be part of it, and honestly, we have the opportunity to host the planning conference. So, and we will meet on the 3rd, and we will have the 17th, we will have the two text amendments, and we'll have the, the downzoning case. One of the benefits of the initiation of this downzoning case is that we now have a written opinion from the city attorney that we've been waiting for, for some time, on the legality of downzoning as a, as a tool in Kansas. So, this will be our first test at that, but we've had some discussions with you before about downzoning, including the Broadway corridor and places like that. So now that we have a written opinion from the city attorney that it is a viable So now that we have a written opinion from the city attorney that it is a viable tool, then we can... This will be our first case in that, but then, once we have gone through this process and it seems to be defensible, then we can look at other situations, and I know the one we focused on the most was Broadway. And then this Friday, I think we've had either four or five qualification submitted for doing a... Getting some outside consulting to look at that Broadway corridor, to look at the medians, to look at the land use there.
Excellent.
So we do have some funds to expand on a consultant for that, and Dustin and I have received those, and we're going to be asked for our input on who we think might be the most qualified to move forward with that. But that is moving forward, and so that might be a dovetail as we get back to focus on that corridor from Crawford to State Street again.
I think, yeah, we visited about that, and in the process, we talked about trying to involve the community, and especially residents and business owners along there in the process, so that there was less confusion and less hesitancy to support it.
And one of the criteria that Dustin and I will be looking at is we ask each of these consultants to outline what they would do for outreach to the property owners along that corridor to get input and feedback and participation, so that's going to be something that we look at carefully, and we'd be inclined to select the consultant who has the best plan for public involvement.
Wonderful.
And I visited with Talk Salina about this, and they're open to facilitating any discussions also.
Okay. Yeah, I think we'll start with... One of the things that we have on our to-do list is to get our GIS technician to give us a printout of the list of all the owners along there, so we can see who's local and who might be absentee owners. That will be our starting point, see who our audience is. So that's what we have for you this evening, and we thank you for all your time that you devoted to these planning subjects, which are not easy.
Are there other matters by the commissioners, yes?
Yes, and Dean, maybe you could tell me if the urban historic redevelopment... It says cheating urban historic redevelopment by the Kansas Preservation Alliance would be something that the... And I've signed up, which I can't go through the heritage commission, and I just wondered if some of the planning commissioners might be interested in that.
You can check with that. I think we'd want to give first opportunity for any other heritage commissioners that might want to attend, so what are the details on that, John?
Basically, it would be going down and coming back on Friday, the 29th of September, so it'd be a one-day deal. It wouldn't include the banquet tours on the previous Thursday, but would cover several planning options and focuses in their afternoon sessions on that Friday, the September 29th.
And that is being held where?
At the Drury Broadway Hotel in Wichita, so...
Okay, and as I understand it, Mr. Baffa is registered for that, and his registration's been paid, but he's unable to go, so we'd be looking for a substitute for him?
That's correct, yes.
So, and you don't know whether any heritage commissioners might be interested?
The other is one. William Tizica?
I could personally contact the others to be certain on that.
Okay, so what we would do, I guess, is if we have no... If we have no heritage commissioners that are interested in attending, we may send an email out to all the planning commissioners and with the information about that, and see if you would like to attend in Mr. Baffa's stead, but we'll give first crack to other heritage commission members.
And that's Thursday, the 28th, and Friday, the 29th, is that...
I think the only portion that we are attending and participating in is the Friday, 29th part.
Gotcha.
I think John has arranged transportation and all that for attending on Friday, the 29th. As soon as we get information on registration for the Kansas Planning Conference, we'll do that. Mr. Neal, I noticed that we were identified as being presenters for the... We got top billing, so I guess we better get busy on presentation.
And you should have, right. And I'd like to segue on that. I did spend the morning there at the Hilton Garden Inn today, and that is an awesome facility and has so much potential to bring things to Salina, bring people here, bring meetings here. It was impeccably done, food was great, space is beautiful, the conference facility itself has all the mechanics that, you know, we have not had and have lacked here, so that's an exciting thing. I won't be here during that conference, I'll be out of town, but I wish I could, so support us.
But in the garage door?
In the garage door, it's just fine.
Give us each a chance to critique the garage door.
You can't even see it. And then I left there and drove back to my office and passed the site in front of Walmart. I passed the demolition of the former UMB Bank, I passed the new Kadoba, and it just kept getting better and better. Salina is certainly something.
What's going in at the UMB Bank?
They're tearing that down, and they're constructing back a multi-tenant building that will have two restaurants and either a third space that will be retail or restaurant. They still don't know, so they're...
Three restaurants, possibly three restaurants?
It is possible that it could have three restaurants.
Well, I'll save any editorial comment on that one.
So will I. I think I've spoken on that one now.
Are there other matters? Okay, if not, I consider we'll adjourn.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, if you're out driving around and you wonder what's going somewhere, we can...